Good afternoon everyone and welcome to this two-day symposium on the Union Budget, titled "Decoding the Union Budget 2021-2022", I'm Mohit Kishorewats, Assistant Professor at DME Media School, part of Delhi Metropolitan Education affiliated to Guru Gobin Singh in the Prast University. Welcome you all to this second day of the two-day symposium on the Union Budget. Today we have amongst us Dr. Sharad Kohli, who is an expert in delivering lectures and analyzing the Union Budget as well as issues related to finance and economy. So I first of all welcome Dr. Sharad Kohli to this special two-day symposium, welcome sir. Thank you sir, we also have, yes sir, welcome sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, we also have the Dean of DME Media School Professor Dr. Ambreesh Saxena and the Head of Department Dr. Sushmita Balabhi with us. So I would like to request Professor Dr. Ambreesh Saxena to kindly give his opening remarks to this second day session, sir please.
Thank you Mohit, we all have gathered to listen to Dr. Sharad Kohli and he is an excellent analyst as far as the business and economy is concerned. And we came across in All India Radio because I anchored that program Market Mantra on AIR FM Gold and I mean I've been doing this program for last thirty years and there we have some excellent experts but I found him, one of the top experts, the way he explains the things. So I took the liberty to make him a request to interact with our students so that the students who have been seeing as to what all is there in the Union Budget and the budget was presented on first February 4th. So students have been looking into various aspects yesterday also we had some discussion but obviously such intricate points which only an expert can explain. So that is how we have sought the help of Dr. Kohli and I think it will be an enlightening thing for all our students. So thank you Dr. Kohli, thank you Mohit.
Thank you sir, now I would request the Head of Department Professor Dr. Sushmita Balah to kindly give her opening remarks for this session, ma'am please.
Thank you Mohit, good afternoon everyone, isn't here? So dear students, yesterday we held a session to give you a basic understanding of the budget that was presented in Parliament on 1st February. Mr. Mohit Kishorewats and Dr. Saxena helped you in developing that understanding. Today we have an expert with us, he is Dr. Sharad Kohli, a scholarly person. We are privileged to have him with us in this session. So I welcome Dr. Kohli, let us all listen to him and get the benefit. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you so much ma'am for your kind words. Before we actually formally begin with this session, let's take a look at the journey of Dr. Sharad Kohli. The multifaceted and versatile Dr. Sharad Kohli is the founder and chairman of a multi-disciplinary advisory group comprising fifteen companies. His personality is reflected in various titles which he has been bestowed with like startup guru, tax guru, finance guru by sections of both print and electronic media. He is a dual CA from India and the UK. Besides being a management and law graduate, he also is an alumnus of Harvard University. With over hundred and twenty awards and honors to his credit, he is a regular panelist with over seventy TV news channels and is known for his talk shows and theory debates on business and economic issues. He has done, he has done over thirteen hundred shows till date. Sir, I welcome you to this special session on the Union Budget and I now request you to cut opening remarks with us on the budget which is presented in the Parliament, which was rather presented in the Parliament on 1st of February, over to you sir.
Well, thank you so much, you know, DME Media School, I would like to thank every official faculty and more importantly all the students for being here today. A special thanks to Professor Dr. Ambreesh Saxena, also my, my anchor in Market Mantra where I've done a few of them and Professor Sushmita is Head of the Department and all the other faculty members and as I said to dear students, so thank you for having me here, it's indeed a matter of pleasure. You know, the Union Budget as I said and first of all thanks for a very sweet introduction, was very well presented digitally, whosoever did it, the fantastic task. You know, coming back to the budget, I think the budget was presented, I would not have preferred to be the Finance Minister at least for this year because it was a very tightrope walk, it was a very difficult scenario. The world for the benefit of DME Media School, I would like to share a very interesting statistics with you. You know how much does the whole world earn? सारी दुनिया मिलके सब इस धरती पर साढ़े सात सौ करोड़ लोग रहते हैं। आपको पता है सब मिलके कितना कमाते हैं? We earn about ninety trillion dollars. You know that is the world GDP, the value of goods and services produced on this earth and this pandemic eroded almost sixteen trillion dollars out of that ninety trillion dollars. So and you know obviously the sixteen trillion dollars of loss was spread across all countries. India was no exception, so I thought to be in a position of a Finance Minister in this year in particular was a very daunting task and you know every year when I do budget analysis they ask me if you were the Finance Minister. They said, this year I said if I was not the Finance Minister, but I would still tell you what I want to do. So it was a tightrope walk, on one side the country's resources had dried up, tax collections had gone down whether it is direct or indirect, all the other travel, tourism, manufacturing, I mean a hit from everywhere. If you, if you take it a three sixty degree, I would say suffering not just on health terms but on economic term. On the other side, the government was committed and had undertaken a lot of welfare schemes, a lot of schemes relating to development which were being committed by this government since the year 2014, they were already in vogue. So it was a very, very tough task, you can't take back development, you can't take back welfare scheme, welfare scheme once given are very hard to take back. You can't say अब ठीक है, आज से आपको नहीं मिलेगा, you know, that's, that's a very tough call. So I think in a country, I'm sure you would also be interested in knowing, we've been hearing about five trillion dollar economy, we've been hearing about that India's GDP right now is about three trillion dollars, two point nine or three, I mean the real numbers will come out but broadly speaking. So I'm sure you are interested and you know a lot of people, Ambreesh, they ask me, ये ट्रिलियन डॉलर्स में क्यों बोलते हैं, भाई हम तो रुपीस इस्तेमाल करते हैं, तो आप रुपए में बताओ ना कितना होता है? Because it's, it's a big number but I'll tell you for record sake, we are about a two hundred and ten lakh crore economy and we are aspiring to be a three hundred and fifty lakh or three hundred and sixty lakh crore economy. So अगर आप ट्रिलियन डॉलर में interested नहीं है, now I think under the size of the budget, if you see the, this budget when it came out, the size of total expenditure was about thirty-four lakh fifty thousand crore. ये मैं इसलिए आपको बता रहा हूं, I mean sometimes statistics can be very boring, especially for students, you know, ये क्या नंबर बताया जा रहा है, you know, हमने क्या करना है यार? मेरी जेब में कितना आ रहा है, ये बताओ ना, मुझे क्या मिलना है, ये बताइए ना? So thirty-four lakh fifty thousand out of the two hundred and ten lakh crore is, is the usual size of the budget. Out of which the deficit this year was about, I would say little below ten percent, nine and a half percent plus or minus here and there, the exact numbers of course, the revised estimates and the budgeted estimates, you make the adjustments. So the good thing was that there is something called Fiscal Responsibility Budget Management, FRBM. I don't know, students of economics must have heard of that. It's an act under which government has to take approval from the, from the Parliament, has to amend that if the fiscal deficit target goes beyond, which is three, three and a half percent is the normal targets. But आप सोच सकते हैं कहां तीन, साढ़े तीन परसेंट और कहां साढ़े नौ परसेंट? So you know, you can imagine the deviation this year. So what people were worried that what if government again starts thinking of the fiscal deficit, FRBM? तो मैंने तो बड़े हल्के-फुल के अंदाज़ में बोला, इस बार FRBM का नाम बदल देते हैं. Fiscal Responsibility Budget Management की जगह, इस बार बोल दो, forget Responsibility Budget Management. Then forget it this time, this year there is no responsibility and that believe me that actually happened. That the fiscal deficit going for this government going up to nine and a half percent, I think, I think was actually FRBM redefined. However, the targets for next year is again down to between six and seven percent, plus or minus point five here and there. So therefore, a tough task, you make a loss-making budget, आप घर का बजट भी बनाते हैं और वो अगर घाटे का हो या बिजनेस का बजट बनाए, घाटे का हो तो बहुत आसान काम नहीं है. You know, you, you earn criticism for everywhere. But the good thing was that the whole world was riding the same boat. From the most developed countries like America to Europe which is still suffering, everybody was riding the same boat. So there was some leeway there, there was some, some neutrality there, there was some discount there in terms of the reputation, in terms of countries' ratings and so and so forth. Now the focus for the Finance Minister was that they had to put the economy back on track, which is we are for the sake of records, we are technically into recession right now. As we talk today, we are into recession about twenty-four odd percent in Q1, the negative growth about seven to eight percent or maybe eight percent plus in the second quarter. और ये वाला हम क्वार्टर लें, जो भी होगा IMF के और RBI के forecast कहते हैं that overall for the year, for the year 2021, we will have a negative of again around seven and a half to eight percent. So I think for a country like India with a hundred and thirty-five crore people and the fastest, one of the fastest growing economies, one of the emerging economies to be, to be in negative growth is a big deal. It's not an easy thing to digest कि हम actually हमारी अपनी wealth, हमारा अपना total goods and services का जो total produce था, वो कम हुआ. But the silver lining was that next year's projections for IMF, I am now referring to the first part of the budget, the silver, the, the, the next year's projections are very healthy. We are looking at about eleven percent, हालांकि मैं ये बताना चाहूंगा, the eleven percent is गिरे हुए में से eleven percent, which means we are about seven percent down, eleven percent up. So we have net-net about four to five percent up, I think this is very important to understand. Although the growth will catch up, it's a, is a big relief. Now, I think the focus of the government was because what went wrong during this pandemic? Apart from tax collections going down, production going down, everything, unemployment shooting up, what was, what was the main, the magic word which went missing? That was demand or consumption. That all of a sudden lockdown जो हुआ, बीमारी नहीं है, इतना कुछ नहीं का, बीमारी नहीं है, तो कुछ लाख लोगों को या एक करोड़ लोगों को effect किया, उसमें से ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent ठीक हो गए. Or as we talk today, touch wood, our country is in a very good position but जो नुकसान हुआ, वो हुआ lockdown से. I think that lockdown tried, tried to destroy the economy although we are a very resilient economy and we stepped out of it faster than, than you could imagine. But the lockdown did the damage and the damage was, as I said, demand and consumption. Suddenly वो बंद हो गया, लोग घर में बैठ गए, समान खरीदना आपने बंद कर दिया, आपने services लेना बंद कर दिया and you found that all those manufacturers, traders, service providers, they were, they were stranded, you know, उनकी factories, उनकी दुकानें, उनके, उनके clinics, उनका जो भी कुछ था, वो सब बंद हो गया. They started giving pink slips to people, unemployment at one point shot up to thirty percent. So the budget's focus was to bring the economy back on to track and to create demand so that you go and buy, you go and buy goods, you consume goods. Now, India's economy by characteristic is sixty to sixty-five percent a consumption-driven economy. Consumption drive, जैसे चाइना के economy है, वो manufacturing-driven है. मैं कुछ एक का, UK के economy है, वो, वो property-driven है, you know, properties there is a big deal. हालांकि थोड़ा बहुत manufacturing है, consumption, वहां भी ऐसा नहीं कि उनके economy में तो consumption नहीं होता और manufacturing doesn't happen. But it is negligible, primarily we are a consumption-driven economy. Now, that is why consumption was the key word, consumption was the magic word. So I think the thrust of the budget was infrastructure because how does consumption start? When you start spending, how does spending start? When people have money in their pocket, how do money, how does money land in the pocket? When capital investment takes place, that is when factories are there, they employ people, people get salaries and their money lands in your pocket. Again, when money lands in your pocket, you go and buy. So it's like a, it's like a circle which comes, which goes a three sixty degrees and that is how the economy runs. So all the government had to do was to push spending, push consumption, push demand. And I think the first mover advantage government decided to take and government has to do it anyway because it's the biggest spender in the country. In the budget, it decided to spend thirty-four lakh fifty thousand crore of total spending, even though the resources were not enough. In fact, twelve lakh crore is the borrowing target which the government has set. One lakh seventy-five thousand crore is the disinvestment target which the government had set. क्या अब वो जो public sector undertakings है, जहां पर, you know, the assets worth billions of dollars are lying there, you know, किसी के पास land है, किसी के पास कुछ है, उसको, उसको, उसको अब disinvest किया जाएगा and you will realize money from that source. Of course, there are other sources also, there are tax targets and so and so forth but deficit financing is now being done to the extent of twelve lakh crore. So that was the thrust of the budget. Now, before proceeding further because we have time, I had requested Ambreesh that we have time until three thirty and absolutely unforeseen and unplanned board meeting of one of our companies has come up, so there was some emergency decision to be taken for which I was supposed to be there with you until four but with my humble apologies to Ambreesh, I will be there till three thirty. तो मैं चाहूंगा कि इसको, अब लेक्चर तो आप बहुत सुनते रहते होंगे, तो मैं इसको लेक्चर नहीं बनाना जाता, लेक्चर तो मैं, मेरा आदत बोलने की है TV पे, रेडियो पर, आप Ambreesh जब उसे रेडियो पे भी बुलाते हैं, तो मैं तो सारा दिन बोल सकता हूं. पर मैं चाहूंगा कि अगर ये interactive रहे, if you're able to interact, you ask me questions, so therefore moderator, you are Mohit. So if Mohit can, Mohit can, you know, put questions to, to me, if you receive questions, I'll be happy to answer question. तो जब तक question नहीं आनते, I will keep speaking but I won't mind being interrupted. Please do interrupt if you have any question. So the thrust to the budget as I said was to try and put the economy on track. Now, what she did was she divided the budget into pillars. If you seen there was, there was human capital, financial capital, health, you know, different, I, I think this is the new way of this finance ministry elucidating the announcements. If you see during the Corona lockdown, they were about five, आत्मनिर्भर भारत अभियान announced, one after the other and in each one of them, they had segments. I think this is a nicer way of doing it because at least you know you're not just reading one big novel of a budget and you don't know कि वो कहां से शुरू हुआ, कहां खत्म हुआ, कहां से में chapters. So they divided it into, into chapters, which is a good way. So you know that you are now discussing this sector. So out of that, for example, health was one. Now, health, she decided three prime focuses, curative, preventative, curative and well-being. That is trying to prevent such a pandemic-like situation from happening. If it happens, cure it and once you are cured, your well-being, जिसमें portion अभियान, you know, you must have heard of that, where focus was made on nutrition. So you know, setting up, I think this, this pandemic taught the world, जो countries अपने ऊपर बहुत गर्व करती थी, developed countries, कि हम तो बहुत vikshit हैं, you know, we are, we are like very, very rich. Would you believe, I have friends in London, I did my accountancy of there, I have an office there as well. मुझे उन्होंने बताया कि वहां पर minus two temperature था, अभी तीन, चार दिन पहले, snowfall हो के चुका था, hospitals के बाहर, hospitals के अंदर beds नहीं थे, लोग बाहर लेते हुए थे, stretchers पर, temperature में उनको warmers डालकर लिटाया हुआ था. So बड़ी से बड़ी arthvayavasthayen, चर्मर आ गई, they were crumbled because the health infrastructure. So I think it was natural that government had to increase on ninety-four thousand crores to two lakh twenty-three, twenty-four thousand crores, the health spending, whether it is by way of hospitals, whether it is by way of setting up new facilities, whether it is by way of setting, setting up health check, health centers, checkup centers around in the country. So I think health was one of the focus. Then the focus was financial reforms, whether it included a setting up of security board where all these small, small financial regulatory mechanism is put under the same umbrella. Then I think we are a primarily agriculture-driven economy. Sixty to seventy percent of our population directly or indirectly depends on agriculture. You know, we are primarily, primarily into agriculture, leave out. So there, there are two countries within this country, one is India and one is Bharat. And, and trust me, Bharat is much bigger than India because that is where most of the population lives and they are dependent on agriculture. So agriculture allocation was again on government mind and in the current scenario and agriculture is making news every day for various reasons which I don't want to dwell upon. I think it was imperative for the government to have focused on agriculture and I think sixteen lakh fifty thousand crore of allocation on agriculture credit was another big move. Then you know MSP has been the talk of the town, you know, that, that farmers do not, they are not able to get their, you know, the selling price on the produce that they do. So I think connecting one thousand Mondays, APMCs to the, to the ENAC system, the electronic marketing which has been set up for the farmers was another major step in the direction of reforming. So the budget is a combination of budget and reforms. You see so many, so many schemes have been announced for women, for youth, for children, for education, for health. So practically every sector has been dwelt upon. So I, I mean, I can just, because there were six pillars, so each pillar for me needs at least one art. But then I would, is there a question?
Yes, sir, yes sir, there are, there are questions in the chat box and...
Please, please, so I would love to take the question, will you mind reading it? Because I'm not looking at the chat box.
Yes, sir, yes sir.
Focus my eyes on the camera hole, yes.
Yeah, it's okay sir, I have the questions and I'll read them for you. So there is a question coming up from Vivek Prakash, he is a student of Journalism and Mass Communication. He's a first-year student, he's asking that what are your views on the education policy in relation to the budget? Because if we, if we talk about the budget in terms of the pillars, the allocation given to education, what's your view in that? Like right now you told us about the health allocation, can you please tell us about education?
But that's a very good question and I will take, I will answer this question with a more macroeconomic view. See whatever is in the budget is in the budget. I mean that is, there is an app, you download the app called Union Budget, you open and there are sections on it, so I'm sure you can see. What I will tell you is that the education as far as our country is concerned has always been found wanting. Now, I'm not being critical because the percentage of allocation on education has been very, very low and this year may have been slightly better than before. But as an economist, I feel that if you really want to take our country to five trillion or ten trillion dollars, if you want India to become a developed nation, अगर आप हमें vikshit rajji की तरह देखना चाहते हैं, the most important pillar where you need to work is education. तो मैं जहां से आपका question आ रहा है ना, जिसने पूछा है, मैं उस जड़ पे जाके answer करता हूं, जो आपने पूछा है, वो तो सबको बताया, वो तो public domain में है, जो education पे, हालांकि, हालांकि साढ़े सात सौ, एक लव्वे स्कूल setup करने की बात कही गई है, tribal areas में और institutions, colleges, universities की बात करी गई है. पर मैं ये मानता हूं कि अगर हमें देश को arthik dhrishti से आगे ले जाना है, if you want to take our country towards the being a developed nation, I think education is the most important thing. जिस दिन इस देश में, the day in this country, a graduate who's done BA, BCOM, BSC, whatever, steps out and asks के, अब आगे क्या करना है? ये जो question उठता है ना, कि graduation करके कि आप आगे क्या करना है? यही हमारी education policy की कमी है. आप, you, you look at the education, I'm, I'm from Harvard, you look at the education, the way it happens in US, I'm not trying to praise them and criticize or unquote, that's not, but किसी की अच्छी बात हो तो वो ले लेनी चाहिए, बुरी, बुरी बातें छोड़ देनी चाहिए, अच्छी, अच्छी ले लेनी चाहिए. So the, the, you know, there, the students in the university are prepared for a job, are prepared for a career. So I think our education system is gradually moving towards that. It's not that we are, we are like miles and miles away, it is moving but the pace is a bit slow. And I feel that our education system should be prepared to, to, to make students, to make professionals who are ready to launch their career. ये graduation करने के बाद जो पूछना पड़ता है, कि अब आगे क्या करना है? ये सवाल वहां पर नहीं होना चाहिए. आप जैसे ही पंद्रह, बीस साल, अठारह साल, पंद्रह साल स्कूल में हो जाते हैं, तीन साल तो total, अगर हम preparatory school से लें, तो तीन और बारह, पंद्रह साल, तीन साल उसमें graduation जोड़ी है, that makes it eighteen years. अठारह साल पढ़ने के बाद, मुझे लगता है कि ये सवाल नहीं आना चाहिए, आगे क्या करना है? So therefore reforms, further reforms in education are needed. But Harry said that, if you look at the budget, you see the problem is that in our country, even basic education in certain pockets and I'm talking of geographical pockets is missing. So obviously the government to reach that stage has to first fill up the gaps which are there underneath. So I think an attempt, these eklavvi schools which I, which I referred about the seven and each school is going to cost thirty-eight crore rupees. So I think there's a big allocation which has been made and it's a welcome step. So first step is fill up the basic education gap, जो literacy problem है, जो लोगों को, यहां आज भी हमारी देश में ऐसे लोग हैं, जिनको sign करना नहीं आता, पहले हमें वो भरने की जरूरत है. जैसे ही वो भरे, the next step is to, to make our country education system job and career oriented. The moment like your institute, your institute is into media, you know, the moment you pass out, you know, you, you start looking for media houses, for training, for, for apprenticeship, for internship and then you get on to the job, this is the kind of education which is required at all levels. मैं समझता हूं जो colleges graduation कराते हैं, मुझे लगता है उनको भी कुछ, कुछ ऐसा ही काम करना चाहिए, जो आप लोग कर रहे हैं, तो जिस दिन वो हो जाएगा, education will be. But then as for the budget, I think education, it has moved towards reforming education but there is still a lot to be done, yes?
Thank you so much sir, there is another question and I see that there are similar type of questions being asked by Ashutosh Baghel and Priya Mishra of BAJMC. The first year and proposal being introduced by the government in the budget specifically relating to the IPO of LIC and the disinvestment of two public sector banks and one general insurance company. So what is your view on that?
I think it is good because see, I come from a theory which, which says government has no business to be in business. And I think government also believes in that. I heard this, one of, one of the ministers of the government saying that government has no business to be in business. You see these public sector undertakings, they have been there for ages, some of them are called navratnas, you know, some of the undertakings were really, really profit-making. But if you see their performance for, for the last twenty, thirty years, you will find that their profits have been coming down whereas the cost has been shooting up. Because government, government's business is to govern, you know, as the last pillar said, minimum government, maximum governance, that was the sixth pillar of the budget. So I think pursuing this pillar of minimum government, maximum governance, I think government is gradually trying to exit from these companies so that these companies should be managed by people who are trained to do business. They should be managed by MBA's private professionals. So I think that is the goal and, and at this point of time, government also needs funds. You know, you need funds for this shortfall which has happened. So disinvest, stock markets are, are, are going through the roof. This is the best time for government to disinvest. In fact, you left to me, there is name of Air India also, look at Air India. Every year, every year, Air India needs ten thousand crores, every year. और सारे में उनका पूरा, आप अगर flight schedule देखें, किसी भी airport पर, तो Air India की काफी flights होती है, ऐसे ही बाकी airlines जो है, Indigo है, SpiceJet है, जो थोड़ी airlines है, उनकी भी होती है, तो ये कैसे है कि Indigo जैसी airline तो profit में चलता है और Air India उनसे अच्छे जहाज उड़ता है, उनसे बड़ी flights है, उनसे शायद कहीं अच्छी service भी है, फिर भी loss में चलता है. So I think the reason is that government has got no business to be in business. I'm not being critical, ये government, ये sentence government ने बोला, ये मैंने नहीं बोल रहा हूं, ये government बोला, सिर्फ ये है कि I agree to this theory. So therefore disinvestment is a natural outcome of the theory when you believe in maximum, maximum governance, minimum government, कि आप धीरे-धीरे वहां से निकल जाए और जो उसमें हमने ये भी देखा, you will not believe, I have been to some of these PSU's and I remember visiting a PSU in Haridwar called Bharat Heavy Electricals Limited. Would you believe जो उनका factory है, मुझे नहीं, आप में से अगर कुछ लोग वहां गए हैं, there's a place near Haridwar called Jawalapur, I'm citing as an example. पूरा का पूरा एक शहर... Pura ka pura ek shehar, us company ke naam me basa huwa hai. Aur main shehar isne keh raha hu toh ki aap andar literik ho jayenge, waha jaate hain. Bakaida blocks, nager hai andar. Pura acha, aap sochii agar is zameen ko, jo log waha rehte hain, vo rehte reh, vo thik hai. Aur jo waha surplus zameen padhiya, agar usko becha jaye, aaj hazaro koron rupe. Aur yeh toh ek kahan hi hai, railways ke pas land hai, national highway authorities ke pas land hai. So monetization of assets of government, the assets which are which are lying worthless, which have no value because they are under ownership of the government. Government now wants to convert them to cash so that these resources can be used for development of the country. Therefore, chahay L I C ka disinvestment, o coming back to the specifics of your question. Chahay toh public, look at the public sector banks, aap kabhi, aap aisa kariye, ek din jisne bhi yeh question puchha hai. What you do is one day you visit a private bank, any let me not name because I don't want to give them free advertisement. You visit any private bank or uske foreign baad, uske foreign baad aap ek nationalized bank me chal. Dono me mujhe badana, unka infrastructure, aapko kaise attend kia gaya, aapko service kaise mili, waha ka ambience kaisa tha? Procedures kaise the, qeeh thi ki rai? Yeh panch se cheeze aap jaake mujhe bataiye ka. The answer to your question lies in this exercise if you do. So therefore uh this investment I think is very healthy for the country and government should will is attempting to gradually get out of these these organizations. Yes.
Thank you so much sir. There is another question that is from Tratyak Shahuja. He is asking that rupees two hundred and thirty crore, there is a reduction of rupees two hundred and thirty crore in budgetary allocation to the environment ministry and it has drawn flag from many environmentalists. So what is your view on that?
Well, I think there is a difference of understanding here. See, there are two views. Whenever a budget comes out, toh abhi humne, because thankfully uh we are not on a on a on a political platform and we are not, we are not on any government or non-government. You are a, you are a private institution and we have, we can, we can freely discuss without being critical or offensive to anybody. But opposition ka kaam toh hai oppose karana, opposition ne toh oppose karana hai, toh agar vo oppose nahi karege, toh unki jo, unki jo basic jo thesis hai, vo aage nahi chalti hai. You know the prime edifice doesn't move forward. But as, but main ek cheeze ya clairify karana cha raha tha. Whosoever said that, nah aise toh, I will go one step forward, Mohit, whosoever. Aap, if you if you notice in the budget, defense ka toh shayad, shayad naam bhi nahi aaya. Toh iska matlab yeh, iska matlab yeh toh nahi hai ke defense ko country bhul gayi. Mujhe yaar hai, koi opposition ka leader bol raha tha, ke kitni sharam ki baat hai ke the defense ka toh naam bhi nahi liya, jabki country is facing threats from its borders. And there is so much, so much tension on the borders because of China, Pakistan, whatever. But let me tell you something. Did you note something this year? That we, this was the budget number six. This was not the, this was not the first budget from April till today. Every announcement, sirf fark kya tha? Vo budget press conference ki tarah aate the, yeh budget parliament me tha. Chapters usme bhi hoti the, chapters usme bhi hoti the. Uski allocation, ajab aatm nirbar, abiyan aaya toh bis lak koron ka aaya. Yeh chaot saade chaotis lak koron, chalo vo liquidity thrust tha. This was a country's budget, vo alag hai. So therefore I feel that the sectors which have not been spoken about or where you find that the allocation has gone down. This is not the end of the world. Even on defense, I mean Hindustan Aeronautics Limited has been given an order to manufacture tejas worth forty-eight thousand crores. Toh main samajta hu ki yeh toh budget se pehle hi ho gaya tha. Toh bahasari cheeze budget se pehle. Aur aap environment ko toh bhul hi nahi sakte ho. Because jo log budget bana rahe hain, vo bhi toh saas lete hain na. Unki bhi toh, unke bhi toh phepade hain, unki bhi toh lungs hai. So you they will, they will never be able to forget. So I think on environment is a three sixty-five days exercise. Let me tell you. Jin jin cheezon ka isme naam nahi liya gaya hai. Here is an explanation. Now I don't know if if uh finance minister Nirmala Shita Raman would be happy because I am giving this, ke wherever whichever sector has not been named in this budget is a three sixty-five days exercise. It is not a once in a year allocation. You need constant, consistent, regular, continuous allocation to those sectors. So therefore, if you notice that environment allocation could to thirty crore, wait and see. There is going to be hundreds and hundreds of crores more being poured into into environment and defense. And other sectors which have not been talked about, even the sectors which have been talked about, you will find lot happening. I think the government now is enough, is around the year budget making more. Bas yeh first February, ek landmark time hota hai, budget ka aaj se nahi, independence se chal raha hai, toh usko hum ek vishesh mahatv deite hain. We give special importance to this particular event on this date. But otherwise, as far as I am concerned and I know that for sure uh that that budget making is an year-round exercise and so are the announcements.
Thank you sir. There is a question that is from Manat Chavla. She is asking uh that what is there in this budget for the uh middle class or I would say the salary class?
Manat, a billion-dollar question and I was anticipating that somebody is going to ask this. Aur Manat, saari middle class ki manate toh wahi ki wahi reh gaye. Because middle class ke liye toh middle class ke liye bahat manate maanggi sabne ke yeh A T C me yeh hoga, yeh F D D me yeh hoga, slap badhai jayenge. You know, a new regime jo income task hai, usme kuch slap rationalization hoga. Par mujhe lata hai, you know, you know, I mean at the end of the day, yes, there is a regret, middle class, middle class. Uh yaha par, is country me aisa lata hai ki ya toh bahat poor population ko kuch kuch milta rehta hai. Ya bahat jo elite hai, unko milta rehta hai. Bichare middle class wale toh drawing room me T V ke samne baid jate hain. Aur baid ke ek do jo samne aaya, unko galiya waliya de di, aapas me discuss kar liya. Aur bas wahi sab khatham ho gaya. That's it. Unka andolan itra hi bada hota hai. So middle class ya andolan bhi nahi karti hai, you know. So therefore, therefore, yes, you are right, Manat. That middle class was not given any direct benefit because mostly it comes via taxation. But I feel ke aap log Covid test ki baat karete. Remember before the budget, there was a very strong rumor that there is going to be Covid test this time. Toh na kuch diya, na kuch liya, na ek, ya nahi toh liya bhi nahi. Toh main samajta hu ke is bar innu ne kuch naye tarike ka uh income tax ke provisions ke announcement jo thi. When the speech was going on, people kept waiting and suddenly when she moved on to the next chapter, toh vo le bas, vo toh aaya hi nahi. That was the thing, bas. Arre, what happened? Abhi aur aayega, you know that is what. So I think focus has been, Manat, this time on simplification and facilitation. You know where senior citizens have been given the benefit, you are seventy-five years plus eight, don't fill the return, go to the bank. Get your tax paid there, don't file the return, pre-filled returns, ke aapko return bharni hai, toh pakhi pakai return samne aja. Aapko zada kuch nahi karana padde. This has advantage of making it simple and it checks, it it checks the points of tax evasion also. Or making a dispute resolution committee, lots and lots of cases have been pending in the department for for resolution of dispute. In fact, the total count goes up to more than eight lakh fifty thousand crores. Aur abhi vishwas se, vivaad se vishwas tak nikala, bahas zada, because of Corona, bahas zada successful nahi raha. So I think government for the cases for disputes up to ten lakh, people having income up to fifty lakhs. So what they did was, they took out a dispute resolution committee, ke aap jaiye aur vo faesla aapka kar denge, thora baat, aap tijjiye, thora baat, department compromise kare. And so, so I think the focus has been on facilitation and simplification. It's a very different kind of middle class, Manat, relief although, hum toh relief usi ko maantey hain, jab tak hamari jeb me kuch naa hai. Toh vo relief, relief sah lata nahi hai. Bilkul aapki baat thik hai, mujhe bhi nahi lag raha tha. Par when you go deeper into the provisions, you will find that simplification is also one big headache. You know this complicated income tax system, jo log karte hain na, ek Hindi me kahavat hoti hai, jis tal laage vo janay. Jis par bhihti hai na, vo chanta hai, toh jawa aapko tax bharna padega na, manat, tab samajh aayega ke aasani bhi ek relief hai. So I think this time, let's give it to the government, is bar innko, innko maaf kar dete, is baat ke liye, kyu ki country ki you know the situation was very tight, fiscal position was very tight. Kaha se bichare deite? Barah lak koron toh humare peeche udhar lena pad raha hai. Ponhe do lak rupee, ponhe do lak koron, apni companies ko bechna pad raha hai, agar main, you know if I talk in. So I think let's give it to them this time. I think this was a year, I was listening to the finance minister. It was a very tough year. So let us not expect, is bar tax de rete hain, jane de jee, is bar tax ko jata hai, toh kam se kam, faatu toh kuch nahi kia na. Let us, let us take it easy this time. But the focus has been on simplification. Harry said that, I agree with you, ke middle class ko, wakai me, par middle class ki hai, you know. Manat, ek bahat badi problem thi, you know, there was one big problem. A majority of middle class was suffering from low incomes. A majority of class was suffering from unemployment also by the way. I think jo government ne directly toh nahi liya, par as an economist, agar main indirekt baat karu, if I, if I talk of uh you know, you know intrinsic benefits. So intrinsic benefits come to you by way of infrastructure. Jaise hi yeh ports, airports, bridges, railways, highways, jab yeh banenge. So you will find that the money circulation in the economy will increase and the money, the liquidity will increase. That will provide employment to people, that will put money in the pockets of middle class. So direct benefit, I agree, is not there. But intrinsic benefits are there because five, five lakh fifty thousand crores of additional capex is being done by the government. All this capex, Manat, will come to us, dev se zaroor aayega, par durust aayega. Yes.
Ji sir, thank you so much. There is another question that is from uh uh one of our students named Vivek Prakash is asking another question and he is asking what is there for the startups and the M S N E sector in this budget?
See for the, again for the startups, if you are aware, sorry, I missed the name of the queerist, what is his name?
Uh sir, his name is Vivek Prakash.
Vivek Prakash. Uh I'll call him, because he is a student, so I always, you know, I was a professor a long time ago. I'll call him D P, alright? So, so uh so uh D P, here is the answer. See for the startups, there is already a startup India mission. There is a startup India department, you will be surprised, I visit that department often. There is a startup India department where allocations are being done separately. And as for the startups, a specific announcement, yes, it is there, I think you missed it out. Now N R Is can set up O P C. You know what an O P C is? O P C is a one-person company, O P C. With you form a private company where you you needed two people, but for last few years, government has launched O P C. So N R Is can now set up O P C plus an allocation for startups has been made. But I must tell you that as far as startups are concerned, government has got a dedicated team which is working for startups. So anybody who wants any help on startups, here is a, here is a, you know, a more pertinent aspect and answer to your question. If you need any help on startups, uh you can go to the department which handles startup, there is a whole team, it's near Vijayan Bhavan. You can contact them online, mention the help you need. What is the help on startups? Startups need funding, there is a startup India fund, fund, it is called Fund of Funds, by the way, for your name. For the sake of your knowledge, it is called Fund of Funds, you can take money from there. You need technological tie-up, they help you. You need skill development help, it is there. You need coworking spaces, it is there. You need to be referred to an incubation center, that is there. So I think startup is a very dedicated plan and government has an allocation. Uh Vivek Prakash, startup is also under the three sixty-five days monitoring agenda of the government. Isiliye maine ka jis cheeze ka mention nahi aaya, uska government ne pehle se, pure ke pure sal me intezam kya hu, aap jaiye. Aapko ke problem aati hai, you can contact me also. I'll put you in touch with the startup India team, which which I am very, very close to.
Thank you so much sir. There is another question from Watsal Omar and he asked that whatever, whatever is being projected in this budget regarding the allocation for the uh health sector, doesn't look like that there there is a hundred and thirty-seven percent increase. So what is your view on that?
I think it's a big deal because for a country where seventy to eighty percent, let me give to Omar a very interesting statistic. Seventy to eighty percent of the population of our country is dependent on Omar, private healthcare. Toh aap samajh sakte hain, ke humne private of private healthcare mind use expensive, it may be good, but it is expensive. Aam aadmi ki jo gari, tapka hai, hamare desh ka. The poorer population, bolo, vo log private hospital, vo fancy hospitals me, vo log ilaj nahi kara pate hain. In fact, they can't even go to, you know, you know, a private clinic because you are charged for a single consultation, you are charged five to seven hundred rupees or or whatever, they cannot afford it. So therefore, I feel from ninety-four thousand crores going up to two lakh twenty-four thousand crores is a big leap for this country and for all the bad things that Corona did. Corona ne kya nahi kia? Aapki sehat effect, aapko lockdown me dala, aapke business ko tak khatham kar diya, norkri chali gayi. Ek acha kaam kia. Vo yeh tha, is desh ko aur is desh ki sarkar ko aur pure vishwa ki sarkaro healthcare ke bare me yaad dilaa diya, ke aap prepare ho jaiye, you better be prepared. Because you, your health infrastructure should be augmented far beyond where it stands. So I think for a country which was on a below one lakh crore allocation, Omar, to move to two lakh crore plus because of the pandemic, I think is a big leap and I do not see this stopping here. You will find that the allocation for health is going to increase many fold in the years to come. Aur yeh jo aapko uh hundred percent plus increase likha hai na, aapko iske faide, chhe mahine se ek sal me aate hue dikhai deene lag jayenge. You will see the difference that it will be easier for you to access this hospital, it will be easier for you to access a doctor. It will be easier for you to get medicines, thirty-five thousand crore toh khali Covid vaccine ke liye, abhi toh I I am sure all of us sitting here, I am reached is from media, so I am sure he must be on the priority list of the Covid warriors for getting the vaccine.
No, my friend.
Okay, but we will all, we all are yet to be vaccinated. So jawa vaccine karane jayenge, Omar. Toh aap dekhenge ke is budget ka aapko kaha jaake faida mil raha hai. Because agar vaccine ke thode baat paisa, aliye bhi jate hain. Even then, it will be subsidized, it will not be at the cost of the price which America is paying, which Europe is paying. They are paying crazy price for the for the medicines. So I think we will be far better off. So at least a beginning has been made. And I am sure this is going to carry on. Yes.
Thank you sir. Uh the next question is related to what you have just answered. Uh there is this student called Priya Mishra. She is asking that although the government has set a target of disinvestment, but do you think that any private sector would buy these banks which are already running into losses and they have huge N P As and specifically referring to Air India and the other banks? So what is your view on that? Are we trying to get that kind of disinvestment which has been set by the government?
Sorry, what is her name?
Uh Priya Mishra.
Uh Priya, you will be surprised to know that there are a lot of takers. Agar Air India ko khareedne wala a sakti hai, toh kuchh bhi bikh sakti hai yaha par, kuchh bhi bikh sakti hai. Because I mean they are, they are in talks with to sell Air India and already we heard Singapore Airlines and Tata's are in talks, ek do aur bhi log queue me hai. So you see the problem with these undertakings, Priya, is not their losses. The problem is management. The problem is efficiency. The problem is professionalism to be brought into these. Ek business undertaking kaise chalti hai? Ek acha management hota hai, efficient systems lage hoti hain, technology latest lage hoti hai. Log sincere hota hain, profit pe, hamesha Arjun ki aanki tarah nazar rehti hai. I think vo focus kyu ki government busy rehti hai govern karne me. Mujhe lata hai vo focus kahi pichhe re jata hai. All the private people need to, to whenever a private investor come, they, you know, they, first of all, they don't take it as it is. They will, they will probably leave out some of the things, the government is also considerate, let us not saddle them with the entire load. So I think some, it is, the deal has to be made, you creative for any private investor who comes. So the government takes care of that, it will make the deal you creative. And there are lot of banks, Priya, you will be surprised, there are lot of banks who are in the queue to take over because look at the, look at the value addition they get, look at the extent of branch network. Ek ek branch, private bank ko branch set karne me, naan hi yaad a jati hai. But here, here you have a network of these nationalized banks with branches in the remotest part of the countries, which would have been impossible for these private. So I think they get a ready-made kind of an infrastructure, which they will be happy to take the rest is between the government and them to negotiate the price. How much capital is to be injected and so on and so forth. So don't worry, they will all be up for the taking. Don't worry, don't worry. Yes.
Thank you sir. There is another question coming up from Anjali Pathak. Uh she is asking that during the last financial year, specifically talking about lockdown, the government gave us the option of moratorium. So do you think that moratorium system can be continued in the coming year considering that still the economy is recovering and there are not enough jobs, we do not have money in our hands? So what is your view on that?
Anjali, I'll answer your question in the backdrop of the budget only because we are primarily in a budget discussion. So uh I am sure all of us do not want to digress and move on to a general economic discussion. So I will keep it in reference to budget. So in reference to budget, if you see, there was an announcement made for recapitalization of banks. Now, why are we required to recapitalize banks? Because of N P As, N P As hoti hain, non-performing assets. These are the assets where people do not repay their loans or bank ko ghata ho jata hai, bank loses. So therefore, Anjali, what happens is banks' capital gets eroded. Now, when it comes to moratorium, aapko bata hai, moratorium me jab humara, apni kiss the rok rok ke de re the, delay karke de re the, toh bank ko, uski agar main Hindi me bolo, toh kitni pidha ho rehti. Bank was in pain because of this moratorium, you you would not believe that bankers' balance sheets have been damaged because of moratorium. Because moratorium means that you do not need to repay your loan for so and so period. Aur is moratorium me toh aap dekho, if you see, the interest component was only postponed. You were not, you were not asked to forget about it. So therefore, it is just postponement of your liability. so therefore it is just postponement of your liability so I do not see to answer your question specifically I do not see moratorium coming again because moratorium was an extraordinary decision taken in extraordinary circumstances in English they say extraordinary situations demand extraordinary measures I think that was a lockdown was an extraordinary situation where people were sitting at home not getting their salaries not getting their income so government had to hold back your outflows also this is the best way they could have balanced your home budget or your own savings account budget to see that you don't have to pay extra so I really don't see moratorium because moratoriums are not very healthy for the from a banker's perspective and now I mean touch wood we are now I mean we developed a herd immunity and and the pandemic is well under control vaccines are in the pipeline things are getting back to normal the economy is kept picking up yes
gee gee sir thank you so much there is another question from Ayushi Verma she is asking ki jo twenty thousand crore has been allocated for recapitalization of public sector banks do you think it will it will solve this problem of NPAs or the problem of this balance sheet which we have these public sector banks
no 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 Arushi that's a very good question no everybody was thinking that is twenty thousand crores enough we were looking at the number of nationalized banks and looking at their losses because of NPAs or up now during this Corona time the losses are going to be even more because because RBI has given a report which says that banks need to be on the alert because you will have a lot of NPAs because a lot of businesses sunk during this period yes Arushi you are right twenty thousand crores is not enough to cover all banks NPAs fingers crossed I hope NPAs zada na ho or ye bank band hone ki kagar pe na a jaye ya bankon ko itna zada ghata na ho jaye ke government ke upar aur pain aaya ki see any pain you must be wondering that is this man a representative of the government is talking from government humare toh ko baat karta hai ye toh government ki baat karta hai par aisa nahi hai let me clarify government's pain comes to us please keep this in mind toh main na us us jad pe pain ko nahi jaan deta jahan se vo utke humare tak ajaaye because government ko pain huwa vo aapko bhugatna padega and it happened it happened we saw that if government is under pain government is made out of us we are we are a democracy government me humare chune hue pratinidhi gaye unko pain aaya vo humko pain aayega toh my my solutions are based on hitting the problem at the root if we only solve our problem it is only going to be temporary but if you solve the problem at the root it will be a permanent solution therefore you are right recapitalization of banks twenty thousand crores is dead definitely not enough par hamne dekha if you are a close follower of the world of economics last year seventy to eighty thousand crores of recapitalization has been done and I think again recapitalization is a is a is a periodic exercise it doesn't necessarily happen at a time or thik hai budget tha allocations hoti hai funds ke toh unhone twenty thousand crore isme dikhaya but I think recapitalization is a very situational situational problem and as and when any bank is found wanting I think government steps in and recapitizing for now your doubt is correct twenty thousand crore is not enough to take care of all the NPAs that are going to happen in the nationalized banks therefore this is not the last announcement with regard to recapitizing that is why government wants to exit these loss-making banks government wants to get out of them that let some private banker handle this let professionals handle it we want to get out because we can't pumping money after all what twenty thousand crore kiska hai Arushi that is my question to you who is that twenty thousand crore coming from you and me it's our money going into the bank see you are my and your money goes into the bank bank lends it to some some entrepreneur some company vo company default kar jaati hai unka loan hota nahi hai mera kiska paisa dooba mera aur aapka paisa dooba try and understand from a macro perspective which is why I am not a representative of government sitting here please if somebody mistaken ke bar bar ye ye government only thing I am doing is I am trying to hit the problem at the root so that let government not be in pain and that pain gets passed on to us next question
the next question is from Rishabh he is asking that in this year's budget there is a agricultural and infrastructure cess that has been imposed on petrol and diesel so what is your view on that
well my view is like a view of any other armadni I would say I mean but the good thing is sorry I missed his name
uh his name is Rishabh Patel
Rishabh uh my view is no different from because I am also a part of the country and I am also an armadni from that perspective I am any like any other citizen in the country so my view cannot be different but the economist in me tells you that first the increase in this Krishna cess has not affected the price of petrol petrol diesel prices are being affected but that is more because of the international crude price where today's Brent crude price is about fifty seven fifty eight dollars it is likely to touch sixty dollars in the next few days because OPEC is going to cut the supply and American inventories are going down so therefore increase of petrol diesel price was imminent but that Krishna cess has been utilized by way of government pulling back the excise on that uh just for your information about sixty to seventy percent of the petrol and diesel price that we are paying is comprised of taxes and duties which includes VAT which includes excise dealers commission freight so and so the actual price of petrol is only thirty thirty five percent and so same goes for diesel therefore my advice to you Rishabh is if petrol and diesel are hurting you please go and buy an electric vehicle in the next two and three years you are going to see twenty to twenty five percent of vehicles on the road as electric vehicles that is the future of the country and the world eighty to eighty five percent of our fuel requirement in the country is dependent upon imports there is nothing much we can do about it and as far as the government is concerned if you are finding the petrol price to be too high okay let me not support the government yes it hurts every time you get in your vehicle the petrol filled you know you have to pay much more so the government in the times of falling revenue I think this was one revenue which government was banking upon so therefore yes it is hurting but then there is nothing much we can do about it and the Krishna cess the latest Krishna cess has been utilized by way of pullback of the other taxes therefore that is not hurting you but everyday increase in the price because of the international crude prices continues to hurt there is no doubt about that
thank you sir there is another question from Anika Anika is asking that what are your views on this vehicle scrappage policy which has been introduced in this year's budget and do you think it is going to it is going to means change the automobile sector of our country
yes I think vehicle scrappage po- policy was overdue first of all I would like to tell Anika that only announcement has been made the scrappage policy in detail is going to come in the next week to ten days or couple of weeks now it says that twenty year old private vehicles fifteen year old commercial vehicles are to be scrapped okay is that what the policy is that what you heard
yes sir yes
so but the good thing there Anika is that this is right now a voluntary policy which means aapki marzi hai agar aapko bis sal baad abhi bhi apni gaadi se preem hai aap apni gaadi se mahabbat karte hai aap usko rakhie apne pas apne garage me samal ke rakhie uske saath selfie khichwaiye or usko shadab me makhle jaiye that is my advice because you know you know when it comes to environment I think the vehicular pollution when you are driving behind a car which is emitting smoke aapke man me aajkal kya aata hai pehle hum log dhyaan nahi deti the but now what do you feel you feel yaad you know you feel like stopping that person main tumhari abhi shikayat karta hu please isko ban karu usko gaadi ko thik karau ya ghar me ban karau ya usko besh to so I think a twenty year old vehicle is a is a very long period you know Anika vo to vintage car ban jati hai bis sal baad toh kyuu aap rakna chaaho bis sal me toh bis sal mujhe laga raah bahut lamba period de diya vintage banne lagti hai to vintage you know aap rakho toh uski vaise khade rakke zada value baneegi anyway jokes apart so what I mean is first of all this is a voluntary policy you will not be forced most likely when the fine print or when the details of scrappage policy come you will be given an incentive either to buy a new vehicle instead of that scrap that we will give you some subsidy in replacing your vehicle or government will give you benefit in some other form because the announcements are not are yet to be made so therefore I can only be speculative but I am sure some incentive because it is voluntary it is so ye kam se kam zavardasthi aapki gaadi ghar se nahi utka ke chali jayegi ke laiye saab bis sal ho gaya ab ye gaadi ab aapki nahi reye ye toh aap kachre me jayegi that is not the case therefore I think it is good for the automobile sector yes replacement policy is always we are if somebody follows stock markets you are watching even today I mean even today I have a screen in front of me uh the the automobile shares are going through the roof even not just automobile auto accessory share tyre ke share chad rahi ishi vajse ke gaadi toh ek bikhti hai tyre chaar lagte hai so they are also shooting up so carbon black ke so I think for the entire automobile sector scrappage policy is going to do wonders I think automobile sector in before Corona during Corona has gone through a very bad time thankfully automobile sector now is one of the best performing sectors in the country we noticed that after lockdown people went on a rampage event and broadcast or kahi agar scrappage bhi a gaya toh sune pe suhaaga hai
thank you sir there is another question from Nethik Bhatter he is asking about that how can we relate this budget to the stock market because when this budget announcements were there the stock market was booming up and there were many means experts or many people who were saying that the economy is so what are your views how is this stock market related to the budget
see stock market sorry once again the name because I listen to the question more than the name the person
uh it is Nethik
a Nethik ab meri ye Nethik jembari hai ke main aapko sachat bata hu aaj kyuki Amrish bhi baithe hai yahan par or Amrish toh you know hafte me kahi bar stock markets ke baat karte hai you know you know Nethik stock markets always discount the future stock market may not be may not be may inverted commas may not be a direct indicator of how the economy is doing so please make a note of that stock market comprises of traders comprises of investors comprises of foreign institutional investors comprises of domestic institutional investors who invest to make money they invest in the economy no doubt but that investment in economy is way indirect so therefore stock market lives in a different realm I would say altogether or stock market ke jaise maine shuru pe bataaya vo bahut jaldi bahut emotional hai stock market aapko maan lo Nethik maan lo aapki shaadi 2024 me honi hai or stock market ko pata lag jaye vo aaj hi band wale baja ke aur usko uspe uspe dance karana shuru kar denge or kahi unko pata lag jaye ke aapne 2023 me bimar padna hai bhagwan na kare aap kabhi bimar padey toh aaj hi stock market girne lag jayegi that is the way stock market behaves therefore what you saw during the lockdown the march of Nifty from seven thousand five hundred which is almost kissing seventeen thousand as we talk today a log sochte hai ye ho kya rahe you know when Mr. Kohli started his speech he said sixteen trillion dollars lost from the world economy and now when he is about to end the speech he is saying the stock market goes from seven thousand five hundred to so what a what a what a radically different statement yes that is the truth because people were the liquidity that was pumped in the world you know stock markets were driven by liquidity trillions and trillions of dollar pumped in America in in Europe in India as well look at what RBI did we had repo we had we had TRTOs we had so many exercises being done by RBI to make sure ke kahi liquidity kam na ho jaye kyuki agar liquidity kam ho jaati toh vo saraka sah phir toh pandemic ka aapko kahi guna zada effect milta so Nethik because of liquidity stock markets kept rising the surplus money which was floating in the economies that was that was being pumped into stock market as a result of which they are I would not hesitate in saying ke thoda sa overbought hai market thoda sa overvalued hai which is why we recommend to the investors to be very careful because somebody can easily burn fingers aap fas sakte hai usme toh you have to be very selective in stock market but to answer your question very very pinpointedly I would say that yes stock market has gone in the reverse direction when the world was sinking into recession the world the stock market was traveling towards Mars and Venus and everybody was wondering ke ye ho kya rahe but it was a liquidity driven but then having said that I would like to add something here abhi humne jo Q3 ke kuchh companies ke achi companies ke results dekhe very surprisingly I mean the V-shaped recovery jiski jiski ki budget me baat ki gayi economic survey me baat ki gayi that is not just a statement actually we have noticed abhi humne automobile ka baat kiya hai you know we have actually noticed a V-shaped recovery in so many sectors and this is surprise in fact you will be surprised the GST collection is one lakh twenty thousand crore for the last month before Corona this wasn't one lakh twenty thousand crore ab sab soch rahe hai ki logo ko huwa kya ekdum se ke Corona se pehle jab sab kuchh thik tha koi bimari nahi thi tab toh aapki GST collection ek lakh crore bhi pahuncha mushkil ho raha tha aaj jab abhi bimari se pure nikle bhi nahi hai toh itna kya ho gaya ke logon ne khareedna shuru kar diya I think we are we are we are coming out of that recessionary phase faster than we can imagine as I said our economy has got a characteristic and that characteristic is that we are a consumption driven economy to the extent of sixty sixty five percent of our GDP and this is a peculiar characteristic of a consumption driven economy jitna jaldi vo girti hai utni jaldi vo jaise ya aap dukan pe saman khareedne jayenge economy chadne lag jayegi I am putting it in very very simple terms so therefore therefore I think I think the recovery has been faster than we imagined so therefore good results from the corporate are also partly responsible for this skyrocketing stock market but I I cannot I cannot completely disagree with where your question is coming from
thank you sir so I think we are now moving slowly and steadily towards the end of this program there is another question that is coming from a student named Ayushi she is asking that there has been an announcement on the in the budget regarding the prices of gold and silver so how do you think that these gold and silver prices going down will affect our economies
see gold and silver they are not just investment avenues they are also big consumption driven products you know gold is used for a huge jewelry industry which flourishes in this country silver has got not just jewelry but also industrial use the mobile the chips that you use it's got so many so many applications so I think the country our country doesn't produce gold we are primarily importers of gold so therefore the size of jewelry India is by the way India is the biggest consumer of gold I am saying consumer and I said ke jo hum ye jhumke aur haar aur kangan pehnte hai we are big consumers of nowhere in the world itni jewelry banai jaati hai jitni humare ya banai jaati so you know what happens is if the country doesn't produce we have a few gold mines but they are not enough to supply to the massive jewelry industry which exists in our country therefore the government decided to reduce the import duties on gold because these jewelers were constantly complaining ke saab hum jab gold import karte hai humko mehnga padta hai uski vajse hume jewelry mehgi pad karne padti hai or humari bikri nahi hoti hai already aapne jewelry par GST laga diya hai aur bhi you know ab logo ko pan number chahiye hota hai pehle log cash me khareed leti the aap cash me nahi khareed pate so jewelry industry was feeling suffocated so there was a memorandum I am giving you inside information now the finance ministry I am a close to some of the corridors there so there was a memorandum made to the finance ministry before the budget the jewelry jewelers association there are many associations for jewelry in India they gave a memorandum ke sah aap kam se kam kyuki country me itna gold hai ni aap iski import pe duty kam kariye so that you know we are able to do it in a cost-effective manner we are able to produce quality and let's not forget that country is a big exporter of jewelry so when you when your when your cost of gold is high your jewelry costs internationally you become uncompetitive to keep the jewelry exports intact to make sure that jewelry is available at a reasonable price I mean as it is gold ki price se jewelry badhti jaati hai kam se kam jo import cost hai usko deutilize karne ke liye you know import duty because of the memorandum given by lot of jewelers I think the government has been sensitive to that and it has reduced the import duty on gold and I think I think it's a good sign but I still feel that gold is a very good investment in the long run koi agar gold me investment karana cha rahe toh aane wale do tien sal me it's my personal recommendation if you want to believe me it will give you a lot of returns even and at this point as we talk gold price has really really gone down so therefore it's a good time to buy gold khareed ke rak leje or tien sal baad aap bacheenge toh uska twenty five percent aap be shak I will give you my bank account you can pass on to that
sir one last question although we have lot of questions but I know we are running short of time right now so one last question is related to the finance commission because we all know that the finances of the state governments different state governments have been severely affected and the central government has also asked them to borrow from the market so how do you feel this fifteenth finance commission recommendations coming in and how do you think that GST collection collections going up will affect the finances of the state governments
you see we have been we have been noticing some friction between the state and the central government over the GST collections in the last few months if somebody has been following that news that the states were complaining that we are not getting because when this GST was made when late Mr. Arun Jaitli was the finance minister the GST was made on the on the edifice that whatever will be the shortfall from your existing VAT and service tax collection and all the seventeen laws were merged if you remember into GST so sabne kaha tha saab aap ye setra ko bana ke ek kar rahe humara kujhe kamaiye ho ban ho jayenge hum kaise chalayenge state ko so he said the shortfall the compensation the shortfall will be made by and somehow because the country's economy was not in a very healthy condition over the before Corona as we just spoke so the government could not pay on time the share of the states which I think sort of disrupted the state's balance sheet and that is where your questions come from and if we talk of the fifteenth finance commission yes I agree And if we talk of the fifteen Finance Commission, yes, I agree, that fifteen Finance Commission has tried its best to make sure that the state's financial position is not, because, I mean, I don't want to, because this is a very, this is an academic platform, so, I don't want to get into that part of the discussion. But I can tell you that there were at least eight states that I knew personally because I do a lot of debates on TV for some of the regional channels also. So, I have to, whether I like it or not, I have to get into states' balance sheets also. But I found at least eight states were finding it difficult to pay their salaries also. When I say salaries, I mean salaries of the state government. Therefore, it was a very challenging task in front of the Finance Commission. They had to balance out on the one side, they had to make sure that they leave enough funds for the center. On the other side, they had to make sure that the states get the share so that they are able to stay afloat. There were some states, even as we speak today, some states are in a very bad financial position. But I think Finance Commission, its distribution, its methodology, what parameters it applies to decide on the state's shares, that is a bit of a different discussion altogether. It requires an independent analysis and how this is done. I think we can, we can leave the detailing part to some other, to some other time because it is just about running out of time. And, and I think, I think we can have a separate discussion on Finance Commission, you know, for that matter. Also, doesn't relate directly to the budget as of now, yes?
Thank you so much, sir. Although we have a lot of questions, but I think it's time now that we conclude this program and we would love to have you here again discussing some other matters related to economy and finance. But right now, on behalf of the DME Media School as part of Delhi Metropolitan Education, I, Mohit Kishore Wats, would like to thank you for taking out time from your busy schedule and explaining the basics of the budget to our students. So, thank you, Dr. Sharad Kohli for taking out time. And I would also like to thank the Dean of DME Media School, Professor Dr. Ambari Sathana, because it was his idea to have this podium. I would also like to thank the Head of Department, Professor Dr. Sushmita Balap, Mr. Riteg Ghosh, Mr. Sumantara Sarthirathas and all the faculty members of DME Media School for making this program a grand success and most important, the most important stakeholders, the students. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. It was an absolute pleasure. I wish all the students of, of DME School to become media balance at some point of time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.